Good evening and welcome to the July 30th Board of Douglas County Commissioners, 5:30 Business Meeting. Paper copies of our agenda are available for those here in person. And the full packet is available on our website. Reviewing our agenda first, we'll consider our consent agenda. There are three items on that agenda. After our consent agenda, we'll move to general public comment. We welcome general public comment for addressing issues not on today's agenda, but otherwise related to county business. Given our limited time and the need to have orderly, efficient meetings, we apply certain rules regarding public comments. We will do our best to enforce these rules consistently and without regard to the point of view expressed by the speaker. Here are the rules. One, each speaker will be limited a total of three minutes of speaking time. However, we'll accept public comment of any length in writing. Two, individual speakers may not donate unused time to other speakers. Three, all comments must address topics within the jurisdiction of the county commission. And four, we reserve the right to mute or remove any speaker whose comments were threatening aggressively hostile or belligerent. Campaigning for public office during the public comment period is not allowed. Please give your full name and address for the meeting minutes and address your comments to the commission. Please know that the comments received by the commission during our meetings do not necessarily represent the views of Douglas County government, but we value the input. We don't usually respond to general public comment on the spot, but if you leave your contact information with county staff, we'll try to get your specific questions answered. After that, we'll move to our regular agenda. There are three items on tonight's regular agenda. The first one will be an update on the Douglas County Public Safety Building in the second phase. Then we have the approval, considering the approval of a grant with the US Department of Housing and Development. And our final item would be a review of the 2026-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. For each action item, we'll hear from staff or an applicant, followed by questions from the commission, and then open the item up for public comment relative to that relevant, or how about, yeah, relevant, that was right, I said it, to the item. Once public comment is closed, we'll bring back the item for the commission for further discussion and a vote. Lastly, recording of this meeting will be available on the county's YouTube page and website. Sorry for the glitch there, commissioners, I don't know what happened. All right, commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to have removed for further conversation? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who'd like to remove an item?
Sure.
Oh, yes.
I had a comment on one. I don't know that it needs to be pulled, but certainly commissioners or the public can make that decision too, about the minimum maintenance designation. I just kind of flagged that it seems odd that the residence is on the Douglas County side, but that Franklin County will be paying for that maintenance. And just that, my understanding is that every other mile of that county line road is shared, one mile by Douglas County, one mile by Franklin County. So I just, unless there's anything that I'm wrong about that, that just struck me as something that needed another level of clarification.
So do you want to pull it for further discussion, or?
Not unless, okay. Chad says, yes, pull it, or yes, that that's accurate? Let's go ahead and pull it.
Okay.
It'll be quick.
Is there any item that the public would like to have pulled? Sounds like we're pulling 1.1. Seeing none, anyone online, Sarah? Hey, commissioners, I'd take a motion for the two consent agenda items.
Commissioner Reed moved to approve items 1.2 and 1.3.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes 5-0. We'll move on to item 1.1. Consider landowner request to rescind the minimum maintenance designation on a portion of North One Road in Palmyra Township.
I just pitched that to Chad, if you can just give us a lesson on why it ends up this way.
Sure. So this is a section of road that Franklin County has been maintaining for a long time, like decades. There was a minimum maintenance declaration, and Kevin is online if we need to get into details, but I don't think we really do, probably. It was long ago, it was done in both Franklin County and Douglas County. I understand that in Franklin County, it was really informal, the way that they managed that. We have in our county code, the minimum maintenance declaration process is spelled out, and we're pretty formal about that. After several years, or maybe not that many years, Douglas County erroneously issued a building permit on the road. And so we had a resident on the road, and the road has been maintained by Franklin County, and there's just been this sort of understanding that they're going to continue to do that. The landowner in question is wondering about the ability to sell the property or additional parcels in that area. And so he has asked us to initiate this, so that he has buildable parcels for sale on a road that's being maintained. And so that's why we're bringing this to you. We also reviewed this process, and our process to declare a minimum maintenance road is very detailed, and it follows statutes. It's not necessary for us to follow a detailed process to reverse that. We could just have you vote right now to reverse that, but our code is not set up that way. So we're also investigating the potential of a future text amendment to remove the difficulty of this step.
I appreciate that, that's some good background. When I looked at the map, it looked as if there were several driveways off of it. Is it still just one residence or one property?
I think it's just one occupied residence, and then there are parcels that have driveways in addition to that, that are probably going to be buildable after this.
Thanks.
I got a question now. So the residence is on the Douglas County side of the road, but Franklin County maintains the road.
Right. So that if you follow the county line all the way around, you'll see that hopping back and forth of maintenance responsibilities. The townships have most of those miles. Franklin County takes care of all of their mileage, so that's how they got that one. A lot of it has to do with operational efficiency. If they're coming up the road from the south and want to turn and then turn around and go back, it works really well. That may be the reason that the township doesn't have this stretch. But it's not a consistent pattern. It's really just looked at in terms of operations.
You can speak a little bit to that if you can hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. Yes, Franklin County does maintain the full mile to the east of County Route 1055. Going west of 1055, if Palmyra Township were to be the one maintaining that stretch, that's the only stretch of road within two or three miles that they would be maintaining. So it would not make sense for Palmyra to drive all the way down the county route to maintain a quarter mile of road. So it made sense just to give that extra little quarter mile of road to Franklin County to maintain. West of this quarter mile section, the road was vacated 30 or 40 years ago before the minimum maintenance declaration. So there is no maintenance west of this quarter mile section. So again, the quarter mile going to Franklin County doesn't really have anything to do with the residences on the road, more of just kind of what Chad was saying, the logic of who is in the area and who's closer to maintain without wasting mileage trying to get there to maintain it.
And I think that's a beautiful thing, when we can add a little logic into the scheme. So I appreciate that, Kevin. Thanks.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here at the courthouse who'd like to make public comment on this item? Anyone online, Sarah? All right, we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion, motions.
I would make a motion since I started it. I moved to approve the attached resolution 25-30 that officially commences the process of rescinding the minimum maintenance designation on North One Road in Palmyra Township, and requests a recommendation from both the Palmyra Township Board of Highway Commissioners and the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission.
Jean Dorsey, I second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Chad. All right, we'll move on to the general public comment portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here who'd like to provide general public comment on an item that's not on our agenda? Seeing none, anyone online, Sarah? No one's online. We'll close general public comment and bring to the regular agenda item. We're going to start with an update to the Public Safety Building, our Phase 2 main level finish out.
Commissioners, I'd like to invite Jeff Lane with Trainer Architects as a member of our design and construction team to give you all this update, and I'm sure it'll be other comments from the whole team.
Good evening. It's glad to be back again, again. As Sarah said, we'd like to give you an update. I know we were back, I think it was about three months ago or so, to begin the opportunity to begin the tenant finish for the Public Safety Building. So this would be the sheriff's space that we had shelled out in the original portion of the project. So our team has spent time collectively working through that. First, I want you to, if you haven't had an opportunity yet to get out to the job site, this picture here is an image from the construction work that's already going on, that Jay Dunn's doing a great job at. So wanted to just give you a little bit of tidbit there. If you have a chance, get out and take a look at it. This was taken, I think, a couple days after the big rainstorm. So I think it's probably drier now, so you can probably get out and walk around. So today, we're going to give you a little bit of a project review and update, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps as it relates to the overall project. So one of the things I wanted to come back and just share is kind of where we were, and then I'll talk about where we are. So as you remember, when we first started through what I call Phase 1, which is the first initial GMP, we had a couple alternates, which was a shell, base number included, or base design included, the 911 dispatch, emergency management, and then we had shelled out the sheriff's office. And we also had included in that the alternate for the parking area for them as well. So just to kind of remember that as it relates to what we were doing then. And just a quick thought here as it relates to what those plans look like. So there on the left is the lower level, which is the dispatch and emergency management. And then on the right-hand side is what we had on the first go-round of the upper level of that of that space. So as you can see, it was shelled, even though we had some circulation and some exiting and what have you. And then this was including all alternates. So this included the vehicle garage bay space that you see there to the left in the gray, the evidence storage space there next to it. And then off to the far right there in the, I think that's supposed to be red, but it looks pink from here, is the public entry and sheriff's kind of office space. And they were going to fill out, or they will fill out the whole area, but that portion there was part of the shell out space. Couple images that I just want to share on the exterior of a reminder of kind of where we are and where we were going. So again, material palette hasn't changed. This portion will be built, and you'll see as it goes up here over the next few months. And then the second image here is the staff areas as they would come and come into the building themselves. So then through that process, what I would say we've done here over the last three months is develop the project. So we've actually done exactly what we did through the first portion of the project. So we met with the user, we met with staff from the IT component, and everyone else, and we walked through a process very similar. So we had different design meetings, we had discussions about finishes, we had discussions about access control, cameras, all those great things that go into this type of a project, whether that be furniture layout and those types of things. So we worked really hard with the sheriff and his staff to come up with what we felt was, or we feel is a really, really good plan, not just for today, for the future. So there's some growth capability within this, which is what we talked about when we first started, to give them the ability to not just, we're here today, we move in, and then it doesn't, if I go add two or three staff, I have nowhere for them to go. So we still have that and still incorporated those things. As you would probably, if you did an overlay, because I actually had my team do this so that I could say this tonight, if you do a quick overlay of what we had at concept and schematic design to what we have today through the development process, I think we had about maybe hand, two, two offices that were incorporated within the square footage. So the square footage never changed, and a couple other little walls that we moved around a little bit just to make sure it functioned and worked the best for the sheriff. So we didn't just, again, I think it's, part of it is, is we were doing a kind of a fit-out development piece to that. So you can kind of see what we were able to do. We were able to capture a little bit better entry space, not from a space perspective, but actually a better public. So that green space kind of down on the far right side, so that space has some ability there for when the public comes, for staff to be able to access those folks, have a conversation, pass paper, those types of things at that lobby space, and then they could leave, or they can actually come back into the building. So we were able to really nail that down with the sheriff and how he wanted that to function. So I think it's going to work really, really well at the end of the day. Other than that, I think the rest of it was pretty straightforward from that perspective. The vehicle storage garage, I would tell you, we did do a lot of work with them on that. Part of it's to make sure first, the vehicles that they want and everyone wants to be able to fit within that space, fits in that space. So there were some adjustments we made there from the doors' size and locations and things along those lines to be able to capture what's needed there at the end of the day. So that was one of the bigger pieces that we navigated through, through our development phase. Just a quick look at the final plan. So again, it's no longer colored, but this is it, and what we were able to capture at the end of the day for a total fit-out for the sheriff and his staff. So we did a few images. We felt it was important to highlight, or not just highlight, but to be able to show kind of what the space is and looks like at the end of the day. So as you can see through development, one of the pieces we talked about, and I know that I have a slide that's going to kind of bullet some pieces, but some of the things that we talked through as we, as we worked through the development phase, and these are pretty standard conversations that we have through a development process of any project, same thing we did again on the JLDC and the lower level. But we talked about acoustics. So that upper-left image shows the corridor for staff. So one of the things that we navigated through with the sheriff is how do we best serve that area with acoustic treatment? So because it has a lot of hard walls, again, durability, things along those lines, that's also where the skylights are. So that has those skylights we talked about through the design phase. So we wanted to make sure we captured acoustic. So you see some acoustic panels on the wall, you see an acoustic wood ceiling there at the front entry. So if public do come back, which there are some public that will come back to be able to go to an interview room or what have you, it does soften that space a little bit as it relates to that. Locker room space there on the lower left, and then some staff space there on the lower right. All the materiality that we've got fits what we're doing everywhere else. So again, it gives you that flexibility down the road. So if carpet needs to be changed out, you change out the carpet. It's a two-by-two carpet, paint, pretty simple, acoustic ceilings, and then some casework there from a standpoint of staff area. So the other pieces that we also have is creating some natural daylighting from those skylights into the office spaces. So you see there on the upper left, some of the window components, we were able to capture. All of those have doors, but to be able, again, talk about natural daylighting, right, be able to get that natural daylighting into the staff areas off those skylights. That was part of the reason why we wanted the skylights, or we designed in the skylights at the end of the day. The upper-right image there that you see is the fit-out for the staff area, so where staff come into the space. So those are the stairs that go down to the common area. That area is the ones that's shared by the emergency management, dispatch, and sheriff staff. On the left, lower left, that is the public lobby space. So again, pretty simple. We added some acoustic, we did incorporate some seating there so as public can come. And then you can see there to the left, the glazing that I was talking about for access and viewing from a standpoint of staff. And then the lower right, just another image of that public corridor space, or sorry, not public, but staff corridor space with skylight, some of the natural daylighting, we're able to capture both in that space as well as to into the office spaces. So one of the things that I wanted to share today is what, what are some of the big pieces of the conversation that we had through our development? As I said a minute ago, or a few minutes ago, the vehicle storage was a, was a big driver in making sure we got it right at the end of the day. So there's some changes we made in that space. The staff parking, as we talked about, is an item we were actually able, if we go that direction and add the staff parking down the road, we're actually able to simplify some of the way access happens into that space from arm gates and things like that, and security. So those are some things we were able to capture there. And then the generator, just being able to provide a generator that is going to be full service at the end of the day. So that's one of the other items. And then access control, audiovisual, and then I already talked a little about acoustics. So through development, we were able to actually spend quality time with the sheriff and his staff to really nail down what access control means for them and their spaces. Because this building is occupied by three different groups, access control is really, really important. And because I showed you that middle section, right, where that can be used and is to be used by all three of those parties, access control really becomes important. So if I'm a person that's in emergency management and I decide to go up to the second floor, we want to be able to create that access control so they can't get into evidence storage, right? That's not a good thing, or into the investigations office. So those are things we were able to do there and really nail that part down. And then audiovisual from just the standpoint of being able to capture what is needed for them. So again, we haven't added any bells and whistles, but just trying to provide what's the right solution at the end of the day for them. So giving them a conference room that's fairly similar to what they currently have, being able to provide some monitors in some areas where staff need them to be able to access, whether that's news, whether that's understanding what's going on within the community, those types of things. So we were able to incorporate those into the development process, which is, I will tell you, two things. One, access control, audiovisual, and the acoustics in schematic design normally, and anytime we do it is a narrative. So it's here, hey, we're going to do access control, we're going to do audiovisual. And then when we get into development, that's when we actually start to nail that down. And then we get into CDs, which we are at and ready to go out to bid for, that has all the detail, right? So that's, that's kind of what we were able to capture collectively as a group as we work through the process. I think that is it, and I'll let Mike come up here and talk next steps. How about that?
Mike Comer with Jay Dunn, and I'm going to be pretty short and sweet. We did put out the pricing of the documents to our trade partners. We received the pricing back. We are still validating all the subcontractor pricing. We still have about a week left before we're ready to commit on the pricing. So I think that's our next step going forward. Then if there are any other questions, I would say the job is progressing very nicely, and we started erecting structural steel. So things going well.
Commissioners, if I could add a little bit, and Mike can maybe speak to this, you know, staff's been working diligently with the design and construction team as we go through this bidding process. I would say the range for this project, this additional piece is between, I'm going to give you kind of a larger range, because we're still working through it, but Jay Dunn is not going to listen to the top of that range. Between about six and a half and seven and a half million is where I think this project's going to come in. We'll talk more about how we finance that project when we get to our capital improvement plan discussion later. I do think, Mike, some of the volatility in pricing right now might be of interest to commissioners. You know, we're asking subcontractors to commit to pricing for project, for a project that's not going to actually get done until 2026, seven, and, you know, into that process. So maybe talk a little bit about some of the volatility and cost increases Jay Dunn seeing in the marketplace.
I can definitely, I can definitely do that. We are seeing some volatility with the, you know, the word tariff keeps coming up. So I know there's a lot of different scopes of trade partners that are concerned about upcoming costs that are increasing, but the biggest thing is electrical scope right now. We're trying to make sure that the scope that was based in the base bid is accurately being priced for the addition. So there's things that are being held right now that we're not starting construction on. We haven't ordered yet, but they're waiting on the release for this construction project. So, you know, overall, I think, I don't know how far deep you wanted me to go, Sarah, with...
That's fine, unless the commissioner has other questions.
Yeah, definitely answer some more questions on the market itself.
Questions, commissioners?
I have a question for Jeff. I'm familiar with a term called value engineering that usually happens with projects that you had a budget set for, and you start to see that. Have you identified pieces that may be engineered out in order to reach a price point?
We have. We've talked collectively, both with the sheriff, Jay Dunn and Jay.
Thanks.
I had a question about how much expansion you have room for.
Yeah, that's a really good question, and you would put me on the spot. I would tell you, I think what we did when we talked earlier with the sheriff, it gives them the ability to capture most likely up to about 10 folks with the same furniture that you would purchase today. So for instance, I think we have six by eight, so six-foot by eight-foot type furniture in there. So you can get those types of things. If you wanted to actually drop that furniture down to be a little smaller, again, depending on how the sheriff's staff starts to do work over the next five to 10 years, that may change. So furniture may need to be, could be a little smaller. There's, there is ability to get additional people in there from that perspective. Does that answer your question? Great.
Oh, I had one other question. Vehicle storage, does the boat go in there, or will it be somewhere else?
Yes.
The boat goes in there. Yes, we got the boat. Yep.
Meaning the search and recovery vehicle, not like some kind of yacht, right?
You are correct. You know, well, I can't say this in public, never mind, I won't go there. But yes, you are correct.
The HHS MS Armbruster, right, yeah.
So other than the electrical contract, what are some of the pieces that we're still kind of dialing in on to get, get to a reasonable price point?
Right now, the biggest one is the electrical. We want to validate mechanical, and there's, there's other things, like, like you talked, Jeff talked about, the, the storage bay for the vehicles is changing from the base bid. So we've held on that order of steel because that structural steel is changing. But really, it's just a validation of all the pricing that's accurate, because it's the easiest way to describe it. It's not, it's very complicated when you have a lot of scope that we bought out in the base bid, and it is changing with this Phase 2. It's not just a straight-up add of finishes on the first floor. It is changing electrical gear that was already in the base bid, like switchgear. The generator changes transfer switches. It's, it's not just a nice clean add.
You mentioned changes in scope in the, within the vehicle storage. Did I hear that right? What, what's changing there from the base bid?
Yep. So one of the things that we did in the vehicle storage when we first started was we looked at what vehicles could fit and what couldn't. We tried to keep doors at the same size and minimize what that, that was on the first go-round. When we circled back on this design piece, we asked for a priority list from the county and the sheriff's office, emergency management, you can go down... and the sheriff's office, emergency management, you can go down the list. And there, there were a couple priorities that needed to make the garage doors a tad bit bigger. So, and then we also did not have a drive through on the, that'd be the west side. And we had to, we we had included the ability to go do that down the road from a standpoint that you could have added the door, those types of things down the road. But we didn't, we didn't have that because we we didn't anticipate a drive through. There's no road there yet, those types of things. So we're incorporating those and including those now, and then looking to the future so that actually is not future proof. But I think it gives you as a county the ability for growth down the road.
So the added west door for the the ability to drive through, but there's, there's no corresponding driveway access from that door back to the parking lot?
Yeah, we're only, yeah, we're only adding the concrete apron only at this point as we talk through it. Part of it's because it's not a, it's one of those things where we don't know when the road would ever come about, and we want to be able to attach directly to the road. And we didn't, as a team, so this is not a design item discussion or anything, but as a team collectively, including sheriff and Jay Dunn, we just didn't see the need to to provide an added cost of an asphalt road or a concrete road that wrapped around the building. And when we talked with them about, with the users about how to do that, they they had other ways they were going to try to solve that without us creating that from an architecture or design perspective.
So not a priority now, but there is space if if that were to be something that became a priority in the future?
Yes, it's all there. You can, so everything beyond that garage to the to the south is available for a road access, turnaround space, whatever you would like to do there. Again, part of what is, I think it's Franklin Road, if I'm not mistaken, that may be added down the road. The idea was, is can we just go ahead and access that road when it gets incorporated? So those are some things that the county can look at in the future.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yes, this is more of a Sarah question. What's the timeframe for, these conversations are continuing between staff and contractors to to dial in on pricing? What's the timeframe of that work?
Commissioners, I I think we will be back to you for final approval of the expanded GMP either next week or the week after. Right now, I'm leaning towards the week after, so August 13th. But if we're able to pull some things together quickly, we might be able to do it next week.
Does, will that conversation include options that help us get to a price point? Or is it just going to be like, this is, this is the scope of of work that we put forward, and this is where we're likely to land?
We didn't put a lot of alternates into this project because it's, you know, and I think we've talked about that as a, as a team, you know, one of the things that you will see spelled out is the generator. It's, it's an addition. We didn't plan for this big of a generator initially, because when the first phase was built, it was just supporting half the building. Well, now we need to support the whole building. That's a pretty expensive price point. You could decide to cut the generator, but I, it's, we're struggling with what could be cut down in terms of an add alternate.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, thank you, gentlemen. We'll take public comment on this item. Sorry, anyone who'd like to provide public comment? Anyone online, Sarah? This was informational purposes only, no action is required. As Sarah said, it probably won't be next week, but the following week, which we'll look at this again. With that, we'll move on to next item, which is to approve a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And here comes Jill.
Good evening, commissioners. My cover memo outlined the details of a grant that the county applied for. Technically, we submitted the application for this grant in 2023 for a 2024 grant through the continuum of care program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This was to sustain the funding for an original award that we received technically as part of a 2022 grant, but with the timing of the initial round of funding that we got, which was originally $321,000, which we did receive for the first year of the program, which by the time we got this, the grant agreement for the original amount of funding, the program officially started January 1st of 2024. Because it was the first year of us initiating that program, it was a 15 month term. So that initial term ended on March 31st of this year. Successfully housed 12 chronically homeless individuals since that time to have graduated successfully into vouchers with the housing authority. But we we met all our marks on that program. We reapplied for the the grant program again to sustain it. It was approved as a renewal grant at the original, at the same amount, $321,000 is $32. But when we heard from, when we finally heard from HUD about what that, the new amount would be earlier this month, the amount that we were told we would be receiving was less than that. It's $149,520, which is what's in the grant agreement that you have. It's disappointing news, but we were prepared for that as we articulated during our conversations with the budget project, the budget process, requesting the funding to complete this next year of the grant, reflective of the of the modified amount. So that, we have that shored up because of, through the budget process. And as I outline in the grant, or in the, the memo, we are not at this point anticipating the funding to be, to be sustained through HUD in the 2026 cycle. All signs point to it not being, the entire program, the entire continuum of care program being eliminated by HUD. And there is no alternative funding for the permanent supportive housing program nationally. I put some information, a budget analysis from the National Alliance to End Homelessness that provides a pretty comprehensive overview of what that impact looks like, not only in Kansas, but across the state or across the country. But if for some reason that program gets restored, we will absolutely be prepared to submit a renewal application to receive those funds and hope that we're able to keep the program going at its existing, at its previous amount. And I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Jill. Commissioners, you're probably familiar with this. We talked quite a bit about this at our budget hearing. Any questions you have, Commissioner? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Thank you, Jill. Any public comment on this item? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay, commissioners, back to us for further conversation. Other questions or motions?
No questions, just a comment of appreciation. As was mentioned, we had quite a bit of detailed discussion about this a couple weeks ago, so. No other commissioners unmuting themselves. I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize the county administrator to sign a grant agreement between the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Douglas County, Kansas for $149,520 for a term of 12 months, beginning April 1, 2025.
Second. Moved in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Jill. All right, we'll move on to our final regular agenda item, which is the 2026 to 2030. Makes me feel old. Capital Improvement Plan Review. And I see Brooke has made her way to the podium.
Brooke's going to kick us off. Sean may have some things to say. Chad's here as well.
Thank you, Sarah, and good evening, commissioners. Bear with me one quick moment while I get the slides pulled up. I used my wrong hotkey. Sorry about that, commissioners. Tonight, I'm very pleased to present to you the 2026 through the 2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Just a little bit about the county's capital improvement plan. Commissioners, you all just went through the budget process, and in one of the department, the county departments transfers out, commissioners will authorize a transfer to the capital improvement plan in 2026. And this plan details how that money will be allocated to the various projects that are included in the CIP before you tonight. The, the county CIP focuses on infrastructure investments for that time period. The county CIP widely focuses on public facilities, road improvements and bridge improvements and replacements. These projects also support a number of public safety, infrastructure operations, and they also support the sustainable growth in our county. Commissioners, I'm going to take a little bit of a dive into the facilities overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to Chad to talk about some road and bridge projects. So for the commissioners that were here during this presentation last year, you guys saw this image on the screen. This is actually an image from 1940, I think, that shows the the room that you're sitting in tonight and its original orientation. This room did not look like this a few years ago. In fact, it was quite different. But our capital improvement plan projects support infrastructure improvements, just like this room we're sitting in tonight. So I'm going to go through some completed facilities, projects that were done over the course of the last few years. And my gosh, when I look at this list of projects that are completed, I take a really big gulp. Because when I started work, doing this work in administration with Sarah and our team, I think that our capital improvement plan at the time in 2017 maybe had nine or 10 projects. The fact that I'm bringing before you 16 completed projects tonight, these are not small projects. They are huge. They're big construction projects where we are supporting citizens. The treasurer's Sixth Street Satellite Office is one of the larger projects that got completed during that timeframe, in addition to this room that we just talked about. You know, in addition to these large construction projects, you know, Jimmy and Jay on our team also support a number of other projects. This week in particular, I know Jimmy's got his staff and they're working out at the fairgrounds, helping out with the fair. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of work on this slide right here. I'm not going to go through each of the projects because there's quite a few of them. But I I think that that deserves some attention there.
What is this Stratford Tower replacement project?
Thank you. That's a great question. My understanding of this project is that that large tower that sat on Stratford Road there at Ninth and, oh my gosh, Harvard and Iowa?
Elementary School in that neighborhood, near Ninth and Iowa. It's an old, it was an old historic water tower that needed a full update. It's like in a real residential neighborhood, but that's where most of our ECC or many of our ECs, our emergency communications towers are.
Yeah.
Devices.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, with that being said, this is actually a city project. It's their tower. It's not ours. But my understanding is that we had a number of radio equipment pieces on that tower that needed to be moved very carefully because it's public safety equipment. So that one made it to the capital improvement plan because it was just a little bit bigger than Tony could handle out of his equipment reserve. So, you know, we've got a smaller list of projects that are currently in progress. However, I don't want to minimize the small list because we have one of the largest projects that in, that I can find in the county going on just right next door to us, and that's the Public Safety Building. So some projects that will be on the horizon. Commissioners, I'll remind you that at the end of the year last year, we made a transfer to the Capital Improvement Plan Fund to bolster some of these projects. And I want to call those out now. So we allocated $5 million to this building over here, which reduced the amount that we had to go for a bond sale for. So therefore reducing our debt. Thank you. And then $3.4 million was allocated at year end to finish out the Phase Two of the Public Safety Building that Mr. Lane just covered in the previous agenda item. $1.2 million was allocated for the exterior insulation finishing system at the jail. And then $264,000, I I used what was left of that to bolster the courthouse parking lot improvement project. So when all of this stuff is done, we're going to have to figure out how to improve those parking spaces moving forward. Another project that I want to call out here is the cottages at the, it's at the Treatment Recovery Center. It's our permanent, oh gosh, Jill, permanent supportive housing structure over there. We have had to make an improvement. This is the first time an improvement has been requested for a capital replacement for the Behavioral Health Services kind of campus. And so staff built that project into the Capital Improvement Plan, and I've kind of created another section of how, you know, how we're labeling and categorizing those projects. So I just wanted to call that out because that is a new type of project to show up in this fund, but it's the first one. Future projects for facilities, there are a number of projects here that I want to call out that are in this building. So, you know, right now, while we've got a lot of construction vehicles over there for this improvement, and then we've still got the courthouse stonework renovation going on, it's not really ideal to start these projects right now because there's too much construction traffic. So we're pushing those off a little bit farther out. And staff was able to build in a couple of new projects. So one of, I'm sorry, the new projects were on the last slide, and those were the, the EIFS or the exterior insulation finishing system. I always get hung up on that. And then the Public Safety Building completion. This one does have one additional project that I want to talk about, and that's LECFM Station 6. So commissioners, staff is able to fully fund this project by 2026. So we are ready to hit the ground running when that expansion, that project comes to fruition. With that being said, you know, the, the project budget may change, but we've got a really great head start on that project. A couple more projects that I want to talk about here this year, and we've talked about it for a couple years, but this year is the year where there's a very sizable allocation going to the 1242 Massachusetts Improvement Project. You know, as this building becomes complete and as staff begins to rearrange and move out to the Public Safety Building, you know, we're, we're going to have to have a conversation about what, where we want to go with this building. So.
Brooke, maybe I can chime in with that. Yeah, so commissioners, you know, I, we've sort of put off conversations about 1242 Massachusetts until we got the, the jail, the courthouse expansion project approved. That was last year, so now it's time to talk about it, particularly with the move to the Public Safety Building. Particularly with the move to the Public Safety Building, you know, we've really been able to build in our future space planning needs inside this building. Consultation with staff, we believe we will not need this structure moving forward in addition to its overall condition. And whether or not it would make sense to invest in the funds to renovate it for our particular needs, staff is recommending that we don't. I think for the time being, we need the parking. And so throughout the project of the construction of the courthouse, I need the parking lot. But I would say that once parking, once the project is complete, so in 2027, we would be looking to come to the Commission and talk about, do we sell the property? It's a pretty complicated process for counties to sell property. It's all outlined in statute. So I'd want to bring you that information and talk through it. But it's our recommendation at this point in time that we don't believe we're going to need that structure once we have, don't have a need for the parking.
That's been a conversation I think we've been anticipating and kind of glad to see a chance to kind of turn those dollars back into other projects that are more meaningful to us. I know that it's a complicated process to, you know, for a governing body to sell property. Does that, is that just hard to get through in terms of statute? Or is it a lengthy timeline? Because I'm just wondering, like, how soon can we start that process and still maintain that parking, which is the only part of it that we currently need? And is it possible to, you know, sell the building and rent that parking back for another, you know, that six months or so that we would need it during, after that sale?
I think we can look into that, Commissioner, and bring it back to you. Like, what would be involved in the process of the sale? So let us do that piece. I still feel like we're, you know, if anybody was going to try to get into that building and renovate it, they're going to want the parking lot. And so I think until we're able to do that, let us bring it back to you and sort of have that conversation. But with direction from the Commission that we, if that's the plan, you know, it'd be, it'd be my recommendation that we reallocate the funds that are currently assigned to that project to other projects, and then move this project out off of our CIP to signal that that's where we're headed.
So in the proposal before us, still maintains that funding? And we would have to talk about moving it off? Or is it already kind of anticipated in this CIP before us?
Well, what you have in front of you is it's included. Just because I wanted to make sure we had that conversation because it was on a previous CIP. So I'd say if that is the direction the Commission wants to head, we can make that modification before you adopt a CIP on August 27th.
The only sticking point I think we see on that is to sell property, it requires a unanimous Commission vote.
Yeah, and I think we have to take bids. It's, I just want to bring you that whole process. You want to talk about?
Yeah.
Open space?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Commissioners. So a couple more projects that I want to talk about that are not currently in your plan, but you will see on the horizon. Staff will likely come before you at some point in the coming months. The Douglas County Open Space Plan, Commissioners, approved in 2022, an open space plan. A number of departments were involved. It was a very collaborative effort between Sustainability, Zoning and Codes, and then the Public Works Department to make improvements to open spaces in Douglas County. We ran out of time to spend the ARPA money. And the additional revenue that we would have had to send back to the federal government if it weren't expended went to support a project that Chad had completed in 2023. So we were able to maximize those federal dollars. I think it was a $1.7 million revenue against those expenses. So it really helped free up some cash in the CIP to continue the open space project, should Commissioners choose to do that. So with that being said, staff will also, Sustainability staff will also likely approach Commission in the coming months and years about an energy audit and what that would take to implement the results from, from that particular audit. So you can expect to hear more about those coming up. Chad, I'd like to turn it over to you to cover.
Before we move.
Oh, sorry.
To Public Works. So I was sort of taken in the packet with the list of completed projects. And, you know, some of them we budgeted more than we actually spent, which sounds good. But, I mean, how does staff look at that list and say, you know, what did we learn from our budget versus what our ending costs were at a time when we hear costs are going up, costs are going up?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great question. You know, staff is really diligent about trying to develop the best budget that we can based on what we know at the time. Things change. I think for some of the projects that are listed in that list, you know, the scope, we originally thought it was going to be this. And the contractor came out and said, no, you, you might not need that size of unit, or you might not need this. And so they came in cheaper. Some of these projects are also a crossover from a fund that was consolidated and closed. So I'll point your attention to the jail water heaters and the fairgrounds access control panel upgrade. I didn't catch it last year because I wasn't looking in the right place. But that project had already been completed in a prior year. And so that, the value of that project, the allocation that I have, just goes back in to support other projects. So specifically this year, the 1.278 from all of those projects that I was able to reallocate, most of that went to fund LDCFM Station 6. So, you know, staff was able to kind of reroute and redirect those funds to another project that took priority or precedence over another and get those projects that are priority funded. So as far as budgeting goes and lessons learned, I might, you know, engage my colleagues, Jimmy and Jay, and see if they had any other thoughts or anything to add to that. No? Okay.
Yeah, I know budgeting is tricky. And I, but I just want to make sure that when we, but, you know, we're doing our best, and I'm sure we are, but like one that jumps out, a couple of these parking lot ones really jump out as they weren't as expensive as we expected them to be. And so when we're, you know, setting our taxes on what we expect that budget to be, and it comes in less, I just want to understand that a little more.
As far as the parking lots go, we received six bids for that work. And the one that we went with was $120,000 cheaper than the others. So I don't know how they were able to do it.
Yeah.
Or the other companies were just making a bigger profit. It surprised all of us. We moved forward with it.
Okay. And I'd also say that, like, I think overall, we're experiencing a lot of volatility with contractors in this marketplace. I think Public Works had a project recently that had no bidders. So like, there's just a, sometimes you get folks that are ready for work, and you get some folks that are not. So it's very difficult for us to estimate at this, I think, at this current time. I'd also add that, you know, because we budget a consistent amount towards our CIP, if, if, if we don't use all of those funds, we can redirect them to another project. So it's not like we've wasted the funds or we've misallocated any of our CIP dollars. We're able to take any of that savings and then make further progress on projects.
Certainly. Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for me? I'd be happy to answer. No? Okay.
I was going to ask Jimmy a question, but he left. I was just wondering, overall, with the fairly more complete status of the Panasonic plant, if, if you see more contractors looking for work now than maybe two years ago?
Fortunately for my mental well-being, I haven't started any projects in the last six months. We completed a lot last year, as you've seen here. So what I am hearing, though, from others in the industry is Panasonic is still building. And if you saw the latest update on them, they still have a long way to go to be complete. So I think some of the front-end stuff for construction, maybe becoming available, you know, like the dirtwork and the concrete. But finishing services are still really stressed.
Thank you, Jimmy. Chad, Sean, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Brooke, do you want to keep running the slides for us?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that.
Commissioners, so we put together the report that we've put together in past years. It's fairly similar to what we've seen in past years. That gives you kind of the list of where we want to go with funds for the next five years, what projects are priorities. And that's in the packet here. And with these slides, we'll just touch on a few high points, starting with some recently completed bridges. This bridge is down near Vinland. We completed that last year for $1.2 million. Go ahead and go down to the next one, Brooke. And this is one in Grant Township that we completed last year. So two bridges last year. And on the topic of bridges, we, in the CIP, we say we want to complete eight bridges in the next five years. And as Sarah mentioned, we put up two bridges out two weeks ago, and we only got bids on one of those. And it follows this conversation we keep coming back to tonight about contractors and where they are and what they're doing. We have talked to our contractors about why we didn't get bids, and it's because they're busy. And, you know, our, we've got some return customers in the bridge building business, and their workload is full through 2026. And so in our CIP, we are showing two bridges, three bridges next year. And we're going to have to push those to 2027. So 2027 is starting to look like a pileup if we get bids, and we're hoping we do. Because the, you know, the thing that I don't like is that we're sitting on a lot of funds right now, and we want to spend those because there are needs. And it's not a good feeling to continue to build up funds and not be accomplishing things. So that's kind of our concern and focus in terms of bridge work and in road work. We've got the Walker's Drive project coming up. And so, yeah, the next slide here, we list our bridge replacements. We're Plan Eight. Two of those are listed there. Road projects, the Walker's Drive extension is estimated now for total cost to be around $10.5 million. And, you know, even if the plans were ready right now, we probably would not get a bidder. Even though that's a large project, all of the folks that would do that kind of work are busy. King's Construction did our last road project on Route 458 a couple of years ago. They're currently a sub to ESS on the trafficway. Other contractors are working on a lot of KDOT-funded improvements in Kansas City. Obviously Panasonic and all of its spin-off business and creation of different sites around there. And then all of the growth is going to be tied to that. And then we also heard a comment about ARPA funds and the fact that a lot of communities are spending money on things. And, you know, somebody's got to build all that stuff. So a $10.3 million project is going to be a good project for somebody, but we're going to have to really work to get bids for that.
Chad, can I ask you a question about that, that Walker's Extension? I think my understanding was that there was, we were kind of piggybacking off of, I thought, the contractors that were doing the rest of the extension there, the rest of the K-10. Is that not the case?
It's a standalone project funded completely through the county, so KDOT's not involved. And so it's not part of the bid that the contractor's working under. It may be, if that project's still going, that they see that as some good add-on work. Or it may be that it's a completely different group that builds that.
And then when does that go out to bid?
So at this point, our, our current task is to go to the Corps of Engineers and ask for approval to put roads on their property. You'll see a memo in the next few days that we've sent to the Corps. It's a copy for your information. And we anticipate a six-month process at least to talk to the Corps to get that authorization. Because we're using federal recreational lands for non-recreational use, it requires a specific approval for that. And so that, that memo is something we, we, if you remember, we hired BG consultants to help us do some initial layouts and some staking of the center line and sort of troubleshoot the concept plan. And then we've got their preferred alignment that we worked with them to develop on a piece of paper that we can all point to and say, this is what we want to build. That allowed us to go to the Corps now at this point and say, okay, this is the exact project we would like to ask permission for. So again, that just went in this week. And so as far as the timeline goes, we hope to bid that in 2027. And it'll be a push to get that done. A lot of it depends on what the Corps has to say. I'll be coming back to you hopefully in fall with a request to hire a consultant to do the bulk of the design work. And there's a lot of design work to do. We've got a brand-new road, a mile and 1.6 miles long, and a bridge over the Walker's River. So that's a pretty significant design contract. And we also list there the HRR project to put high-friction surface treatment. Other KDOT grant that we got recently was $1.4 million for a bridge. That happens to be the bridge that we got no bidders on. And that was the second try to bid that project. So we're definitely going to be looking at the timeline. There are two issues with that $1.4 million grant. First is it has to be contracted by, there's a month in 2027. That's our deadline to have a, have a contract in place. That's the first deadline. The second one is that KDOT is going to put out bids for the next phase of the trafficway, and they're going to rebuild the La Compton Interchange, and that bridge is right down the road. We don't want to close both areas at the same time. And, and I've talked to KDOT about their schedule, and we're going to be on a tight timeline to bid that and get it done before they start closing ramps on I-70.
Is that the Farmers Turnpike Bridge that didn't get a bid?
Yeah. And then the last topic on this slide is the parking facility projects. And I'm going to draw your attention to the $850,000. That's a combination of two things. One is we want to replace our maintenance building, and we're going to use some tornado recovery funds that we got from FEMA and also some CIP dollars. And then the whopping $7,000 insurance claim from the damage to the existing building to replace that building. And then the rest of that money listed there is $625,000 of ARPA funds that we want to spend on park improvements. We've already spent $231,000 on park improvements. And the biggest piece of that is the handicap accessible kayak launch. It's about ready to have everybody out there and show it off. We're thinking September will be a nice time for ribbon cutting, so. So we're making progress with some of those projects. And this is a general overview. Brooke, do you want to pick this up?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chad. So Commissioners, this capital improvement plan before you tonight, you know, details $150 million in capital improvements between now and 2030. These are just the project budgets, but they, you know, like, we just talked about the Public Safety Building. That is a very firm project budget. And I can say that that's $89 million of that $150 million total. 2024 was the second highest spend-down year in the past 10 years, really in my tenure here. And so 2025, I want to talk about 2025 a little bit because this is going to be a big year for us at the county from an expenditure perspective. I ran a report just before this meeting tonight, and we're already sitting at $15.3 million in expenditures. $13.6 million of that is just in facilities projects alone. And Chad, his, his Public Works staff, they've spent about $1.6 million in Public Works improvements. And we're just now at the end of July. The highest, as far back as I've gone, the highest year for expenditures for Douglas County since 2014 was 2014, when we built the Public Works facility out there by the jail. And that year was $13.5 million. So we've already exceeded that by a couple million dollars at this point in the year. So, you know, like, we talked a little bit about the Douglas County Open Space Funding. Planning is underway for that. We talked about the energy audit. You're going to be here. We talked about the energy audit. You're going to be hearing from sustainability staff about that, that work. And then staff is, you know, we talked about 1242 Massachusetts Street and the reallocation of that funding perhaps to other projects. So with that, commissioners, that is the last bit of my presentation. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And staff would love to answer any questions that you might have about this plan before you tonight.
I had a question for Chad. I think at one of our previous meetings, you brought this up. And that is the Kansas River Bridge at Udora. Did you tell me that's county responsibility?
Yes, it is.
And what's the timeline on that for looking at it?
Not on the list yet. It's, it's out there quite a few years.
Oh, okay.
I would suspect there'd be some maintenance work, like replacing, repairing, patching kind of work before we ever get to the point of having to replace it.
Thanks.
I have a question for Chad. The, the bridge on the south end of Lone Star, it's north, on North 600, which I think is listed as 575-670, the one that was, it just in a traffic accident. It was the one that we were going to be abandoning that and building a second bridge and then using that as a historic park. How much damage was, is that still, is that still the plan is, or how damaged was it?
I, I don't think the damage was significant. We haven't had to replace signs or put barricades up or anything like that. So that bridge has been hit a few times and, and the concrete is hard. It's old concrete. So it doesn't forgive.
Hit twice this summer.
Yeah. Well, and we've had three culvert rails, concrete culvert rails removed by vehicles this week. So it happens.
Does that change anything in the plan before us?
Nope. Just keep on going. Our sign crew and our patching crew are going to be busy.
Maybe need a work session on the difference in old concrete and new concrete. Sounds fascinating to me. Any other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question about 1242 Mass, since we've had a little bit of discussion about that. So I'm looking at the balance forward for that as a little over 1.4 million from 2025 to 2026. And then we have plans to allocate more. But what I think I'm hearing from, what I think I heard from staff, that at this time, we feel that beyond 2026, that we, that staff is going to recommend not keeping that. So I'm, I'm questioning the wisdom of allocating any further funds to that. And it sounds like staff wants some direction about that. What I want to understand in making that decision is, does the, the budget that's currently allocated to it, is that sufficient for the continued, like required maintenance that we would need to keep up? I mean, is it, is it plenty for that?
Yeah.
And then some probably?
Yeah, we don't need that, any of that budget to stay, continue to stabilize where that building is. We don't need any of that. And so, and, and we would like some direction from commissioners. If, if you don't want us to put that new allocation on there specifically and/or reallocate those funds, we'd like to have the opportunity to, to go ahead and make that change before. And, and we know, we can always change those project budgets after we adopt a budget. Cause you're not changing, you're not moving money out of the, out of the CIP. You're just moving it around in the CIP. But this is a great opportunity for us to talk about that.
I think based on what I'm hearing, and I'm interested in other commissioners' perspective, it doesn't make sense to me to allocate new funds to it at this point. I don't know that it makes sense to reallocate the current sort of balance that's in that. I don't know if it's totally necessary to reallocate that yet until we have a further conversation about what the process and recommendation for, you know, potentially selling it would look like. But it doesn't make sense to me that we would, it does not make sense to me that we would, we would allocate new dollars to it at this point.
I think both ways are fine. I think we can leave the existing funds on it, but not put the new allocation on it. And then come back when we have that conversation and this, and see, you know, what we learn as we learn how to sell the building and what would be needed.
Once we get a price tag on the rest of the, the sheriff's building, we may need to reallocate some of those funds to there.
That is my prime target for reallocation for the public safety building phase two.
Is, is, is there any wisdom in holding some funds in there? If we move to sell it, to make any adjustments or changes that we might need to, to make it sellable? Does that?
Well, I think that's why maybe leaving the existing 1.6 on it is reasonable, just to figure out where we're at and just not moving the new allocation, I think is, I think would be a wise strategy. And would give us plenty of funds to cover what we would need for PSB Phase 2. So I'm hoping we don't have to make a lot of repairs to it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and commissioners, you know, for, you know, I've been reluctant to sort of move on this piece of property because they aren't making more footage on Massachusetts Street. But I, I really think with the forethought the commission has had regarding the courthouse renovation and the public safety building, it just doesn't make sense for us. And it is, it is a structure that is going to need quite a bit of work for it to be usable for us. I don't know that that is true for another, you know, organization in this community or for another purpose in need. But for us, with the amount of parking, the lack of an elevator, a lot of those things, it would need to be a public building. It just isn't worth the investment.
Can say I've been eager for the opportunity, once we knew what we were doing with the rest of the downtown campus, to kind of move on from this building and get it sold and not be allocating funds towards it. I can see the wisdom in, you know, if we were to get stuck on, you know, with a, a repair or something that made it sellable, keeping something there. But I'm eager to see that allocated to things that we care much more about.
Yeah, agreed. I, I don't want to put any more dollars to it, but I, I do think there, we may want to hold on to some of those dollars, which we could then reallocate in case, you know, something needs to be addressed.
Agreed. Do not allocate any more dollars towards it and keeping the dollars in the budget currently for whatever we might need moving forward for the remainder of this year.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners, before we open it up for public comment?
I do have a quick question on the, the Vinland satellite site relocation, Chad. Do we, it says relocation. Is this a, a new site? Have we not had one in, in that part of the county? Or is this moving from another location?
We do have a site there right in town and we converted that to the recycling yard. And it really used up some space that we need in terms of storing material. When we do a chip seal, we always have the material delivered. That would be the kind of spot we would put that material. But we're thinking that, you know, not too far away from there, we should get a, another site and it should be a little bigger and on one of our routes. And it would, you know, in the event of a natural disaster, it gives us another spot to go to, to stage if we need to. So there's some long-range planning behind that.
And that recycling location, which was really problematic where it had been, it was relocated to where you currently are working out of for a satellite site?
That's right. Yeah. If you visit that recycling station, we, we put a fenced area to contain, you know, windblown debris. And then right next to that is one of our salt domes and we still use that. And the rest of the site is really tight.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Well, open this up for public comment. Anybody like to provide public comment on this item? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay. This is not an action item, but I want to check in with Sarah that you've gotten some direction that you were looking for tonight.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. We really appreciate it. It's a lot of different projects. And, you know, this is a living document and we really appreciate the feedback.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, commissioners. We'll close our regular agenda and we'll move on to appointments.
All right. I do have an appointment for Palmyra Fire District Board Number 2. So we do have a current opening. And Commissioner Willie, thank you so much for recommending John Thomas. So I've been speaking to John Thomas about the appointment and he's had the opportunity to also visit with the board and to attend a board meeting. And so I would like to recommend that we approve John Thomas for appointment to the Palmyra Fire District Number 2 Board.
I have had the opportunity to serve with him and I think he's a fantastic addition to any board. I'm really glad to hear that Commissioner Anderson felt that was an inappropriate move and, and that he's willing. So I would second that if that was indeed a motion. Yes.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. Sarah, I didn't have any other appointments on my list. Okay. So then we'll move to commissioner and/or administrator miscellaneous. And we typically start with Sarah's memo here.
Thanks, commissioners. An updated memo is in your packet. Just some new dates have been added to the calendar, so please take a look at those and make sure you get them added. I do want to remind folks that the, you have a Monday election canvas on Monday, August 18th for the primary election that's currently underway. Advance voting is underway. Please go vote. And also want to call your attention to communication from the city of Lawrence regarding an IRB request for senior affordable housing. So that's in your packet. You've got some updated newsletters and a report from Little Government Relations. And that's all I have for you, commissioners.
Thank you. I know commissioners are very much looking forward to judging pie on Friday at the fair. I'm grateful to all those people who put on our Douglas County Fair. I know that I will be at the Peaslee Tech Grand Slam Celebration. I see that's on our calendar. Just wanted to check and see if other commissioners plan to be there in case we need to notice.
Already noticed.
It's already noticed? Noticed.
Planned to be there and now can't. So if anybody wants to take my spot.
And then commissioners, Commissioner, I think we, we, I'd like to talk about the date in October. That we have five meetings in October. I think just for planning, it's good to sort of set which one we're going to take off sooner than later. But I also know that we have a chamber request for a city visit? I think, is that the right?
Yeah, the intercity visit.
Intercity visit, yeah. And I just want to make sure we're thinking through that and those dates.
I also want to mention that both Chad and I, or not Chad, Sean and I will be gone two weeks after that for our National Association Conference. So we will both be out on the 29th. So Jill could run the meeting or that could be the date you take too.
I will just share that I double-checked and I don't have any conflicts or preferences, so I'm good with any of those dates. I don't remember when the chamber intercity.
It's the 13th through the 16th.
So maybe the 15th or the 29th are ideal if preferences are elsewhere.
Checking something, sorry.
I've always been intrigued by these in, intercity visits, but some of the others that have been used in the past, and it's Tpica and then one in Northwest Arkansas, I didn't have the same kind of fit with our community as I think Des Moines and Ames might. So I, I think it'd be neat to have one of us go for at least some of it, if not all of it. But I don't know if commissioners had given that a whole lot of thought.
I, I have attended one of those. I, I, I thought there was some good conversations had. I probably won't take three full days there. And so, you know, I hate to, you know, I don't know that we'd have that many commissioners gone. I, I probably would come back if we had a commissioner meeting on, like I think that's the 16th, 15th or 15th. I would, I might go for a day and then come back. That's just my thought on it. I think if we, it sounds like the 29th may be where we're leaning. Commissioners, just want to check in. Yeah.
Really up to you all.
Okay. Let's plan on the 29th for right now.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Any other items, commissioners? Staff, anything else? All right. Thank you for all your work. We are adjourned.